Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another city council. We began our meeting tonight with the invocation by Councilman John Jones.
Lord God, ruler of all the people, of earth receive our prayer. I beseech thee for my city, pray that thy power and mercy may rule those who guide and order those who legislate. Let all seek the order of those who legislate, let all those seek the good of all people and not of self. Let them govern in the fear of God and not the fear of man, offer person advantage of their own. Oh Lord, we deserve chastisement at thy hands and not good things. We have all sinned against thee yet, for thy sake thy love bless us, cleanse us and revive thy work in this city. That we may indeed be a people free indeed and doing righteousness through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Richard Stone would like to know if she will attend this.
Okay, thank you. Has everyone signed up for public comment that would like to do so? Public comment.
First on the list is Minister Ronald James.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Okay.
Resign.
I ain't much of much of time, but I get out of my yard on a Saturday and play my music. And I have seen all those Charlie Hughes. I'm gonna call his name.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm tired of him. Every time I get out there and play my music, he calling the police on me. He come around, he live on First and, really First and, Third, First and Ernie Street. That's where he live on the corner. He come all the way down on Third and Fourth Beltway with his dog and stop right there. Then again, I swear, you know what, fifteen minutes later, police coming. They come and tell me, I gotta complain about your music. But when they come, they say, they don't ever hear it. Do he understand music trouble, sound trouble? So what can we do about it? I'm tired of calling the police on me. And I'm on my hunt. Yep, the officer right there, I don't know his name, Officer Pitts. I went over to the station. I talked to him, he said, I gotta be a hundred feet from Charlie Hughes' house. That's what he told me. So me and my son, that I did, I measured every ten feet. I came over six hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
And I'm way off, I'm way, I'm way off of him. Said, but I'm tired of him. So what can y'all help me do with it?
Mr. James, the next time.
And excuse me, and my neighbors tell the police, they only have a problem with my music.
Whenever, whenever he calls again or whatever, if he rides by your house.
Yeah, he come down there every time.
Let us know.
Every time, y'all, my neighbors done told the officer, they got pictures of him by my house.
Well, we'll start a complaint on him and we'll deal with it accordingly, okay? So the next time this happens, let us know right then.
Yeah, I'm six hundred and forty feet from his house.
Just let us know the next time and we'll deal with it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. James, you're not the only one, he think he patrol the community.
I don't know.
Yes, you're not the only one.
Okay.
If I was a music player, I'd live on, in a park and he come right there and he'll call on me. He'll call on anybody. But see, he don't mind his business and so chief need to lock him up for that. Put him in jail.
There's nothing we can do with him.
Ain't nothing you can do with him.
But he gotta understand sound.
He don't understand. He don't, well, if chief put them cup on, he will.
Tracy Lice.
Allison the second.
Allison.
Hi. Are we working on issues or, because this is on a particular agenda? Or is this just general public comment?
General comment.
Okay, I have a comment for a particular issue. So would you like to wait on that or?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So when we get to three seventy, y'all speak.
Excuse me. Okay. Matthew.
Same issue.
Okay. Ms. Boyd.
I'm waiting till the new business, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Boyd.
New business.
Jennifer Lucy.
I had new business, I'm waiting.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, old business. Three seventy-five South Jefferson Street, Stewart's Toing.
I provided a resolution.
We gotta be concerned, General.
Okay.
Concerned, General.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Item five, consent agenda.
No, I have nothing at this time.
Do I get a motion on the agenda? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. It's been properly moved in second that the consent agenda has been approved and accepted. Okay. All right, the resolution for Stewart's Toing.
Yep, so as we discussed previously, this, we went ahead and handled this with their attorney and ours and received payment for that property transfer in the amount of $1,000 and so.
Just to be clear, that was an easement transfer or easement abandonment, not, we didn't sell any property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What they have requested from us due to their status with their insurance company is they have requested that we pass a resolution enacting and kind of ratifying as the city council the contract that has already been agreed through and who, which Kurt was given authority to agree to at the last meeting.
Right.
And that is the sole purpose of this resolution is to have that pass and we can move forward from that.
Okay, all righty. Okay, would you please?
I can read the, and I think for this, only the title, the main title is necessary.
That's correct.
So Resolution number 2025-13, a resolution of the City of Monticello, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of the right-of-way of West Walnut Street, providing for legislated findings and intent, providing for the taking of implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This second day of December 2025.
Okay, after hearing the reading of the resolution, what do we hear?
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution number 2025-13.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
It's been properly moved in second that we accept the resolution for Stewart's Toing. Next, our city dumpster proposed move to police station.
Yes, so as you recall, at the last meeting, it was asked that I reach out to the church and they just got back to me yesterday, they had no problem with the dumpster being located, as we discussed, right along that fence line of the police property right over there.
Okay, thank you. Next item, bench and shelter requested at Tongue and Second Street bus stop.
So I have not heard anything back from the school, but what we did is I went ahead and got a survey just to see what kind of space we're dealing with and there's just, we have a couple feet. There's really, we couldn't safely build a structure like a shelter or a bench. I want to want that that close to the street right there. It's really just where the signs are. So we have about two feet of space off the street to be able to build something. I just, I don't think that'd be a good spot to build any kind of bus stop.
Is there another location nearby?
There could potentially be, I don't, I'm not sure how the school decided these bus stops, but when I stopped by, nobody was available, so we can discuss possibly moving that bus stop.
I see markers on Tongue Street and Second Street all over and they're wider than if you take both of these guys and put them together. So actually, school board really don't, we're in the city, so we're asking Mr. James to approve and if land on and say, do it, and you're our issue, we should be able to do that. Now, would the school put chip in and put it there or not? It's available space there on Tongue Street and Second Street.
Yeah, there is.
The move design, they have marked, I walk by there every day. They got marked from the road, maybe six feet from the road on each side.
Well, we have, there is that space, but that's not the city's space.
Well, he grant, he gonna grant that too.
Okay, where I was looking at was.
No, he granted it too. He on the land, he granted it too.
Or Hayes, I'm sorry.
They go back and deal with him, he gonna grant that, he granting that for little children.
Okay, okay, then we can look at that location on his property.
That's his property marked. Matter of fact, that whole area is his.
Okay.
I think that might be, we probably want to go back to the school board as well on that. If we're gonna have, you know, a bus stop on private property, is that a potential issue? But whatever solution, I mean, if the, if they could move the bus stop to an area where we have more right-of-way.
No, no, excuse me, for cutting you off. No, because if you move that bus stop there, you got sixteen, seventeen children in that area, you got to walk somewhere.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking to fifty feet this way or that way, that's all I'm saying.
So what he saying, that, that, that comment Jones saying, that every, you can give permission to build one right there. You know what I'm talking about?
I see, I see it marked, you had it marked.
Maybe we need marked there.
Sure.
I will say from a legal perspective, there's some interesting questions of law.
Well, whatever situation, get it ironed out.
So we're talking about Curtis Hayes's.
Curtis Hayes property, yes. Get it ironed out, worked out.
Okay.
Whatever it is, we need a solution.
Okay.
Okay. All right, number seven, new business.
Okay. Let me kind of introduce this by saying that we have a bit of an interesting procedural hurdle with the first one, since we are changing the comp plan and that needs to be done by ordinance, which mean, or we would be changing the comp plan if that was adopted, if the changes were adopted because it would involve a change in zoning, which would mean that in this particular case, we have a handful of options, and I'm saying this before we have public comment on this, on the chance that one of them is selected and we don't necessarily want to have open discussion on all of them today. With the zoning change, we need to have a first reading, we need to have some notices that will be going out before the second reading and or vote on the final of this, which will be happening before the end of this week. And in light of that, we can either move forward with that first reading, which we have prepared today, and skip the remaining two, or we can move forward with the first reading, have public comment on the remaining two and have them be conditional on acceptance of the zoning change. If you need any clarification as to that, I'm happy to provide it.
Is this, is this relevant R1?
R1 to B2, that's.
That would be the zoning change.
Yeah, I mean realistically, the first two items listed there, the comp amendment and the zoning change are functionally the same thing. Because it's a zoning change to move, to take the L-shaped property and make it almost completely B1.
Yeah, which this time they're actually asking for a portion at the top.
Okay, just a script.
So help me to understand.
For what?
Help me to understand. There was a business there called Two Sisters, I believe it was, Pat. That was a business. Help me to understand, was that property R1 or B2?
The entire property was split.
Well, see.
So the front part was, was B2.
Well, it, do you have all the whole property right, Ms. Higgins?
Yes, sir.
So split B2 or R1?
No. It's, the front part is B2, the back part is R1.
So it's an L shape.
I understand what you're saying, so you tell me that's not enough, put whatever you need on B2.
The building fits in the B2, the parking is what has nothing.
Well, I'm looking, I've been looking for, I've been looking on section fifty-four, one fifty-five, maybe fifty-six now. I mean, it listed everything and even got the qualification, what we did way back when, and I don't understand. Somebody help me understand.
Okay.
So we making a molehill out of mountain. And what I'm seeing is, I can't remember when I turned Bruce Lineback passed away, but that thing been going on for about six years. And so what we need to do, we need to put it, hold up, we need to put it to, we need to put it to a vote, either for or against, up or down, and it ain't got nothing to do with about a conflict interest. We talking about a change on it, up or down? And if anybody go to the, help any, a part with the, that's this training that you have to have every year. Matter of fact, I just got out of it in October. So you get a thorough understanding of Florida Statute 112, reference that. So it's nothing to do whether Councilman Evans work for her or not. It's an up or down whether we gonna do it or not. They need to vote for it or not.
Okay, Councilman Evans.
So I would state, that I would be filling in Form 8B for a conflict interest. That is a loss again.
All right, I say again, I went to the conference, I mean, I went to the class. You have to vote, hell yeah. Ain't nothing about no conflict interest, you gotta vote, you're president, you gotta vote for it. Yes or no, up or down? So that four people here, three vote, against, one for, that's what it be in the record. But you can't, you can't qualify for a conflict interest in it, that's not what that about. According to, according to Florida, and matter of fact, I learned something after now. Matter of fact, every city employee that have a leadership position, you guys should take the ethics training also. And so if you hadn't, you might need to, because when you sign that form, and if you say you did, you lying. That's everyone that's in authority, support take that class. I asked, I did ask that question. So you support take it? And if you don't know, if you flip flopping around, don't understand the statute, maybe you can go in and understand and you see where we coming from. But that's up or down, that has nothing to do with a conflict interest. You gotta vote, you in the room, and you can't take, you say, I can't, I gotta go to the bathroom to keep me from voting, you gotta stay in here and vote. Yes or no, bottom line.
For that same concept, the three of you can go up and down, and the three of you can decide whether you gonna move forward or not.
You included, you not exempt, you don't own it.
Yeah, but you don't override that, that's why we get an attorney.
That's, so that's not the Florida statute. Read the Florida statute, constable. I'm not gonna argue with you. Read the statute and get a clear understanding, and if you don't get a clear understanding, call the Florida League Cities. Because what, what is going on here is going against the statutes.
All right.
I ain't talking about no ordinance here, I'm talking about the Florida statutes, 112, and it has a array of things into it. And this is one of them. And you cannot claim, I got a conflict, you don't got no conflict, you gotta vote, up or down, yes or no? And don't give an ass from Jacksonville with Jacksonville Power Company.
Okay. Pursuant to Chapter 112.3143, Florida statutes entitled Voting Conflicts. This is subsection 2A. A state public officer may not vote on any matter that the officer knows what inure to his or her special private gain or loss. Any state public officer who abstains from voting in an official capacity upon any measure that the official knows what inure to the officer's special private gain or loss or who votes in an official capacity on a measure that he or knows what inure to the special private gain or loss of any principal by whom the officer is retained by the way that is defined in Section 1A. Principal by whom retained means any individual or entity other than an agency as defined in Section 112.312, perent to Florida statutes, that for compensation, salary, pay, consideration, or similar thing of value has permitted or directed another to act for the individual or entity and includes but is not limited to one's client, employer, or the parent, subsidiary, or sibling organization of one's client or employer. In summation of the remainder of Section 2A, you cannot vote on any issue that would inure to this special benefit.
He not benefiting from that, because he don't own it.
But his employer does.
He not, he not employed, that's.
His employer owns the property.
Yes, his employer own the property. He, they have a funeral maybe, in a quarter.
It doesn't define the limits on part-time or full-time employment, Councilman.
Well, is he employed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is he employed? Yes.
Sir, I believe that the conflict of interest form submitted by Mr. Evans is correct in this particular situation as a matter of law.
Thank you. Okay, so now, where are we? Now, I'm noticing that the LPA voted three to one to recommend denial and recommend denial of the zone of four.
They voted to deny it. The vote was a little flipped for some reason because of how the initial motion was phrased in this one. I would remind everyone here that under Florida statutes, when it comes to passing ordinances, there needs to be an initial reading at a public meeting before a final vote is taken. In this particular case, that would mean that the initial reading would happen today and then the final vote would be in January.
Okay. All right, so we need to read each one of these.
Well, no, there's, this is just for the first two.
Okay.
Those first two, if you'd like to move, vote, if you decide we want to move forward with those, then we would do a final vote at the next meeting. But I would read them tonight, what, what the titles were.
We need to read the title of that one tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's hear it.
Okay, so for the comprehensive plan amendments, the proposed ordinance would be ordinance number 2025 dash, or 2026 dash two, so far, unless others. An ordinance amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of Monticello, Florida by re-designating a portion of parcel of land located at 370 South Jefferson Street comprising .769 acres from residential low density to commercial, providing for purpose, providing for adoption of the specified amendment to the City of Monticello Comprehensive Plan, providing for legal effect, providing for severability, codification, scribbler's errors, and an effective date.
Okay.
That, that's for the comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay.
And for the second one.
Okay, and so for the next one, for rezoning, would be ordinance number 2026 dash three, tentatively. An ordinance, re, an ordinance rezoning property located at 370 South Jefferson Street, and it would be a portion of the property located at 370 South Jefferson Street comprising .769 acres within the city limits of the City of Monticello, Florida from R1 residential single family to B2 business highway and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have heard the reading.
So we need a motion to move forward?
Yes.
Well, we don't need a motion to move forward tonight. This is just the first reading, we can't take any action on these specifically tonight. If you, if, if we're going to have these heard finally at the January 6th meeting, just, I want to be very clear on this, that's something we can't agree to before a motion is passed.
Okay.
Because then we will get out all the notices in the paper.
Okay.
I would say there is a change from the last time the council saw this in the plan.
Yes.
So if you'd like us to go over the plan as it is now, you guys should hear that. Uh, Quinn, okay, let's go. All right, so the, before, they wanted to change the entire parcel, which is shaped like an L. Quinn, you want to come and hold this? The previous ask was to change all of this to B2 and all of it to commercial on a future land use map. They no longer want to touch any of the conservation area. That has been removed from the discussion, so they want to leave that. And they are not trying to change this little bit here down at the side or here. They just want to change up here across the top to commercial for the future land use and to B2 for the. Zone. For the zoning. The building plans are the same as last time, which no, we didn't find anything wrong with those plans at all. And so this time, instead of having parking going down like they had, there would now be eleven spots right here, all facing south. And then one handicap parking space right in front of the building. So they currently have planned twelve of the twenty-five spaces that the code calls for. DOT has also let me know that there, I believe there's three spaces on the street in front of this. One of those may need to be removed because they're talking about, in order to permit this with DOT for the access point, they have stated that they would want an upgrade of that access point to make it wider for the two businesses, which would probably remove one of those spaces. They also said that they do not want people parking where there are not designated parking spaces. Because I just asked for an opinion, hey, let's say if there was no parking, what would you guys think about periodically when there's a funeral parked on the side of the street? And that's what they said. They would want it only in designated spots, which I believe there's a handful across the street and then currently three on that side of the street. But they also had a concern of jaywalking all along 19, if that happens, so.
Importantly, the biggest change from this one, from the previous one, is there would be no change to the conservation use map.
Yeah, that's the largest change we're talking about.
Can I ask a quick question? Is it possible to change just a section of that back parcel without a new survey defining that as its own separate parcel? Because otherwise, wouldn't the zoning and the comprehensive plan then by definition encompass the rest of the property?
Not, the zoning and the comp plan is separate from the property lines.
We would have to put some meat in bounds, a legal description of the portion that would be changed.
That's a new survey, so that's, yeah.
And it, it could be that it needs to be a survey included with the ordinance. There's not currently, there's not currently a survey for that portion.
Because if, if that's gonna be subdivided into its own parcel, it's probably.
It's not subdivided into its own parcel.
I know it's not yet, but I'm saying if it, if it is gonna, if it is gonna be at a certain point, then it's probably right on the edge of being too small.
Because it doesn't have legal access. We would not be able to subdivide the property further with that portion because it would not have legal access. Cannot create a lot in the city that doesn't have legal access.
Right, but you could de-access through there.
You can't do de-dated access in the city, only in the county.
Okay.
That's Florida statute, that's not even a Monticello thing, that's Florida statute for a sake.
So most of this is the same, other than removing the discussion of conservation and this is less parking than was accounted for last time. They're still talking, I'll do a gravel park, and I'll, I'll let them go and describe the rest to you. I just wanted to update you on the changes from last time.
Okay.
I would quit. Those, those parking spaces, you come out the tree, that, that gonna be in front of the business?
Those are currently on the street in front of the business. I believe there's two or three marked and they're thinking that one might get removed.
Yeah, what I'm saying is from Palmer Mill to Anderson. Not that they'll use them all, there's parking from that corner always to Anderson. And I see, currently we hit a park right across from Billy Joe, whatever that store name. Parked there all the time, never moved. I pass by, right by the guy do the survey, I see two or three cars always parked there.
Yeah.
And they never move, unless when they come back, they parking there, watch, listen, oh crap. So what I'm saying is, those three, if you cut one, if is condition, if they have to use, and I doubt seriously they do, because when you line up, you gonna move them out anyway. Those other parking spaces, no one there, what, are. Those other parking spaces, no one there, what, uh, that, will that funeral, uh, home be able to use those parking spaces?
Those, those are legal parking spaces and they can be used for people that go to the funeral home.
Yeah.
Um, we can't include them in the.
I understand that part. I just want to know if, if their space is there by the state.
In the off-street. Yeah, that's.
And they had to put a sign up that you can't park.
DOT doesn't have any problem with that.
Alright.
Um, they don't want to encourage just parking along the sides where there's not any line. That's, that's all they had to say. But they didn't have, uh, anything else to say about a funeral home being there.
Okay.
Um, just that they would go through the, the proper access permitting.
Would, would the funeral home be considered as professional?
Uh.
I looked in there and I, I seen every name, I, I left, I overlooked, I didn't, I seen the home.
So the funeral thing is a specific designation if you're talking about.
Are you referring to parking or, cause?
No, different.
Okay, I'd say it's a professional business, uh, and we refer to it as a mortuary's, mortuary slash funeral home.
So that's a business?
Well, there's a specific designation in our code for a funeral home.
Where, I'm, I've been trying to find it.
Um, it's in the parking, specifically. I can't remember the.
Well, that's, I, I got my book on my, don't worry about that. Move on, move on, move on. We'll, we'll discuss that in January. We'll talk.
Yeah, it, it. Now, I would bring up something with the council, which is there's a, the parking for mortuaries and funeral homes is one of the few that has a designated minimum under our code. Um, there's a minute, twenty-five spots?
Yeah.
There's a minimum of twenty-five spots that are required for every such business, um, which is frankly, part of the issue we've been running into here. But, uh, that's not really before the council right now. Now, um, with the first reading, uh, we can, we can open the Florida public comment today if the council so chooses. We can also delay public comment until that January sixth meeting if the council so chooses.
Okay.
And I believe, and the council can deny this at this meeting if they would like, correct? Because if when they need a second, if they didn't want to entertain it.
The way the statute is written, as to the adoption of ordinances, I'm a little cautious as to doing that.
Okay.
As this is something that has become on the agenda already. And there is a designated space for public comment and notice to be provided. Whether that be notice for people wanting to approve it or disapprove it is not really a concern. What matters is that the notice is out.
Okay. Okay.
Um, now, if it were to have not come before the council at all, I think that would be a different story altogether.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, thank you for all of that great.
Can we ask the engineer to clarify where the B two overlay would be? I wasn't clear. I thought I had point seven six acres.
No.
The point seven six three acres, I think, was describing the entirety of the property.
That's just the whole parcel. Yeah, yeah, that, that was the size of the entire parcel that we're talking about.
Not the size of the car.
Not the parcel, that will be B two, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I, I, I don't know if the council wants to entertain public comment on this today or not.
Okay, alright, uh, I do have some that were here to make a comment, but we will be carrying this over to next month's meeting. So if you would like to, we would entertain it.
And I, I presume that that means that there will be time for
Yes.
comment next month as well, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Now, do you want to discuss the variances at this meeting?
Okay, alright, now, we have, okay, let's talk about it, because, uh, also that we have stated about the reduced number of parking spaces, so.
Yeah, so the two other items is one variance is being requested to reduce the required number of parking spaces from twenty-five to, like I said, they currently have twelve. One handicap in front of the building and eleven that they've accounted for on the east side, which are
Okay.
Which they would also like to make gravel, and that is what the second variance is for, is for it to all be gravel.
All be gravel.
Um, because currently only a portion of that could be gravel, um, so they'd like to make all eleven spaces.
And while I am not a engineer by any stretch of the imagination, um, based off of the comments that were before the LPA, we would want it to be gravel if this was approved for the potential of issues with washout and other things like that.
Okay, are there any other, um, properties with gravel?
There are the properties with gravel driveways.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so, uh, a concern here that was shared is how are they going to keep the gravel from washing away? And that's a common question, and that's, any, anybody that has one on a slope, you gotta think about that. The, yeah, that, that's what came up.
Yes, go ahead.
You saying gravel? There's, there's gem down there on Rose and Ninety. Past council members, we tried to get them to pave steel knocked gravel, and I don't see no concern water running flooding out. Depending, maybe over ten years ago.
Okay.
Say, paved, they never paved, it's parked, it, it gravel there, gravel and grass.
Okay, would there be any other comments? Okay, then let's proceed then. Uh, six fifty-five and six sixty north.
Well, do you want to make a decision on those variances or?
Do we want to comment on this variance?
Because the, the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning are what we were discussing, would need to wait to be, get a final approval, or so, at the next meeting.
Right.
The variances, you could discuss tonight.
Yeah, those can.
Are we?
Because if you don't, if you don't approve the variances,
Uh-huh.
those amendments may not be necessary.
To be frank with you, this is kind of a package deal. Um, either, if any one of these falls through with the possible exception of the gravel, though, I think even our engineers here would highly recommend that. Is that correct, the gravel parking lot, as opposed to impermeable?
If you're ready, I'll be happy to.
Um, but it, it's kind of a which do you want first, chicken or egg? Do you want, do you want to vote on the zoning and cop plan, which has to wait till next month first? Or do you want to vote on the variances tonight and have them be conditional upon approval of the zoning and cop plan?
Okay, alright, let's take that latter way. Let's do these variances and conditional upon next month's meeting. Then the whole package would go.
Okay, cause, because yeah, if you, if the, if you don't approve the parking space variance,
Okay.
then they, they can't do it.
Now, similarly, if next month the zoning and cop plan changes aren't approved, then they can't really do it either, so.
Okay. Alright, let's take one, one and all. Okay, alright, so.
I think, is there a presentation, comments?
If, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
I do have it.
Just time, whenever you're ready.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm good. I don't have a question on that. I, I have a question on mortuary, um, spaces. If that's the state statute or that's something in this?
That's our code.
It's a city code issue.
Yeah, yeah, that is purely a city code issue, yes.
Is that it? Oh, I'm gonna find it. If, if, if I don't find it, have it for me in the January meeting.
Um, it, it's, it's.
Give me the stat, give me the code, fifty-four dash whatever, twenty-six dash whatever.
I'll find it for you.
And I can go directly to.
And I'll get it, sir.
Evening Commissioners, Matthew Parker, Parker and Jerry from Missagan. They all have kind of, we all beat this one pretty to death here between P and Z, and you've seen it before. So where we've been, where we are is Missagan is looking to put a funeral, move for a funeral home from one side of town over to this property. And to, we've got a set of plans together to make this work, uh, with the building. The problem we've run into is parking, as we've discussed. Um, we've talked about rezoning this, and we presented that last couple of commission meetings ago, some different options. Um, we prevent, presented an option to remove conservation easement.
Thank you, thank you.
Provide drainage because of historical flooding in the area. Uh, there was strong opposition to get rid of the conservation, so we've gone back and eliminated the conservation easement, any, any touching of the conservation easement at all. We've only limited our rezoning to a small area on the north part, part of the property, um, north of the conservation easement that adjoins the property that would work for parking. The rest that will remain are one and the conservation easement will remain intact. And there was a lot of concern about stormwater and conservation easement. Uh, with the layout that we have, we have eleven spaces there. We have two more that are paved on the property. We have a handicap spot. And we were going to utilize three spaces in front of the property. I know Kurt's talked to the DOT, but I have a survey of it, and with the enlargement of the driveway to twenty-four feet to a commercial driveway connection, we'll retain the three spaces in front of the property. As I'm going through the survey, I know the DOT is just kind of, probably looking at it from an aerial, but I've looked at it, um, with a survey. Uh, the plan we have is to use gra, use, utilize gravel parking, a couple of reasons. The, uh, property won't see daily use, so this funeral home, as you know, there aren't that many funerals. It's not a day-to-day operation. It would be parking, the parking that would be used day-to-day is going to be paved. Parking that would be during a service is in the back, that would be gravel. We would use a, um, a GeoGrid stabilizing material. This is a honeycomb material. We've done a lot of this out at FSU for parking and, um, alternate parking areas. It stabilizes the gravel inside of a honeycomb, so it can't move. This is attached to the ground, and then the gravel sits in it. Also allows storage and percolation of stormwater. Uh, the GeoGrid's four to six inches thick, so it's basically a, a cell of six-inch-thick gravel. Uh, we'd use a three-quarter wash gravel, so we'd have a lot of room for storage of stormwater in that. So stormwater, the conservation easement, trying to think what else were the concerns. The driveway connection, we've already accounted for that to widen the driveway to twenty-four foot, because we need a driveway connection, commercial driveway connection. They said from what we've had from previous meetings, the big concern was conservation easement, so we've not touched it. Uh, we'll leave it where it's at. We do have a little reduction in space, uh, the twenty-five spaces. It's kind of, um, an arbitrary value. I don't know where it comes from. We've looked also in the code and looked at the possibility of classifying this as a chapel. Uh, chapel requires a parking of one per three, and, uh, for one, one parking space per three fixed seating, and then one for two hundred fifty square feet of office space. If it's classified that way, it actually works with the parking provided, and a variance wouldn't be required for the number of parking spaces.
Now, I should note on that, that the way that the ordinance is worded, it permits a church to be built on, there, there is a, I, I'm trying to think of the appropriate way to describe it. There's a nuance of statutory and by extension code construction in the legal world, where if you have words associated with something, it, uh, they are given meaning, um, and I'm trying to briefly summarize about sixty years of case law that runs from the Supreme Court down to us.
The ba, the basic way we looked at it was, was whether it's a chapel or a funeral home or a church, Miss Hagan will have a licensed mortician there who will do an bombing. The licensed mortician has a license, his license has to be attached to a physical address. If that's the physical address, ergo, it's a funeral home.
Yeah.
So it would not be disingenuous for it to say it was a chapel, because.
Coming from the other side of that, the way our code's written, the parking is for churches, that is, as, um, he has described here. And this business does not qualify as a church under Florida statutes, so.
Well, there's still religious service, but I think the, the, the mortician really drives it.
Yeah.
And I try not to be disingenuous to the board and trying to fairly represent what we intend to do and what's going to be used. So we've abandoned that, although just do keep in mind that parking would be adequate if that were the case. I can't find any other case, uh, in the city where you've got a funeral home that has twenty-five parking spaces, as we look around the city.
You got it.
From my recollection, the main ones that have been in existence have been in, have been where they are so long that a lot of them were grandfathered in prior to the enactment of this particular ordinance.
Was that, that grandfathered anybody to the city?
Well, it's, it's less the city did it and more they were already there, so they, they get what they, they're allowed to keep what they were doing before.
Typically, the break point is if they ever come in to renovate or come in to get a building permit, then the building and the site needs to be brought to current spec.
Correct. We discussed that with, the case of Beggs, we discussed that when we looked at Calvary Baptist.
Yeah, we just moved them there.
They were going to have their overflow at Beggs. We had discussed the fact that they do not have a parking lot, but if they ever wanted to do a major renovation, they would have to come up to the current code two and have the parking lot.
Ms. Parker, you're showing a six-foot buffer, I guess, between the parking.
Code requires, uh, the city code requires a six-foot landscape buffer between the VUA and the adjacent property. We could pursue a variance to that, to try to get a little more parking in there, but we felt it better to meet the requirement of the code than that. I just thought the, the landscaping would be more of a, uh, an, a concern with the adjacent landowner than, than that having paved to the parking lot. We have talked, Ms. Julie, about possibly using a shared driveway connection and doing some things with her property to the north, but she wasn't interested.
Okay. Okay, would there be any other questions for Mr. Parker?
Um, I went out today and I walked the property just because I wanted to see, and that's a pretty significant slope at the back of the property going down. Is there any plans to mitigate that, or is that going to be left?
A couple of things, I'm looking at doing a retain, one of the things I'm considering is if we do a retaining wall where the parking is, and may just pipe all the water directly out to the DOT, may bring it right through the parking lot. We're doing inverted crown through the driveway and bring all the water out to the DOT. Um, it's a matter of working with the DOT as not to exacerbate problems that they've got on Ninety, and I have not gotten a response in the back. I was kind of waiting until we worked through that, until we find out how this is going to go before I prepare plans and submit an alternate to them. But that is an option, uh, that we have considered, of doing, uh, underground collection of stormwater and then piping it out to the DOT, uh, to take it all off the back property. The increase, we, we have to sit down and do the calculations. The increase in stormwater will, will be mitigated by the ballast that we're going to use by the gravel. And another option that we've used before is to use even a larger bed of gravel to store more water. So basically, subterranean stor, stormwater storage.
Now, once you change that rear portion, um, to commercial, there's an uncomprometory use between that property and the residential around it.
Okay.
And when we have that, there's supposed to be a twenty-foot buffer between commercial and residential.
We have left room for that buffer on to the west, to the east rather.
Okay.
To the east, just at the parking lot.
Is there that buffer to the north?
Well, that's not uncomprometory. It's the same land use.
Isn't that residential, um, to the north?
There's one resident north of the property where the parking lot would be. There is a resident there.
Okay, well, right now, we've got six feet. Um, that could be supplemented with a fence or could be enlarged to then require a ten.
Yeah, so to the north of the parking lot, that would be residential right there. And so that would be required to have that twenty-foot buffer if we were going by the code.
My man. Have, have anyone studied, that really not the problem with that. Problem that's coming from Ninety, and it coming down Walkeena, where it crosses and go on the backside. The city that I'm prepared, um, team time right on Walkeena and Palmer Mill, it sank down again right now. Because the water flowing from Ninety, it crossing over, and it going on the backside. So those businesses on, on the east side of Nineteen is really, actually not the cause. The cause coming from the top of the hill, coming from off of Ninety, where it crossing, then it goes back between those properties. And that's where it's going, they come on the backside of the, part of the place, where it crosses over where the church is. The issue not there, the issue starts, and DOT ain't gonna do nothing about it, sit there and fix that umpteen time out, I mean. Before you then I believe, why you turning? Right now, you can go right there and look and see cones where it sank down again.
I, I mean, there's no question that there's issues with the drainage out there.
Well, I, what I'm saying is, the, the issue starts from Ninety. It ain't starting from back there with those buildings up.
Correct, it starts in there.
That's what I want to acknowledge. It's not starting from there, it's starting from Ninety. And then it coming down the crossing and causing havoc everywhere else. And DOT want to acknowledge it, they should, they get big money to fix it, and they don't do it.
So if you have any other questions, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Alright, are we ready now? Um.
I'm not sure if we called for a public comment on these two things. I'm not sure if we called for a public comment on these two things.
All right, do we have public comment on these two items?
The variances.
Yes.
Okay, come, come.
Hi, my name's Tris Place Allison. I live on one-eighty East Anderson Street. I'm connected to this block. And I can say from personal experience, that water is not just off Ninety. It's not just off Nineteen. I have a property that doesn't connect to either of them directly, and I have a mass of, and out of water. I'm trying not to say the words I was thinking. Coming through my property, down the hill, all the way on the one, two, three, four lots on the side of my property. All that water is not coming from Nineteen or Ninety. Neither is coming from the top. We are a U-shaped hill with a valley. So adding things to that is a problem when it comes to water management. And for my state, and water law allows reasonable use rule for surface water, which is, God put it there, God manages it. We're allowed to manage our water runoff that's considerate to our neighbors and, you know, like, in a basic way that's considered to your neighbors, so we're not creating new issues. When the runoff management harms other properties, their values, their construction, all that, that gives rise to legal liability that I think the city really needs to consider if approving, if they're considering approving this plan in any way, variance or not. The city has not obtained an engineering report regarding the change in zoning for this back R1. They haven't got an engineering report for the change in permeable, change in the style of permeable surface for that back area. They haven't dealt with any of the possible issues that rezoning R1 to B1 or B2, or whatever they want to do on that back section of the L. Even with just a little bit of, you know, work on that. If you can get that to be very strictly the only thing they can do and nothing in the future, that's a possibility. But the future use being left open creates future problems for the city that can create negligence and liability when it comes to managing stormwater runoff that changes with the changing landscape. Ms. Hagan simply just trying to run her business once she gets it there. And once she gets it there, we have a responsibility to help our business owners succeed, right? But if she can't succeed with eleven nearly suitable parking spots on top of the piece of land where the conservation, you know, goes, she's not meeting the zoning requirements for the setback on, on the north side. She is on the east side. But if we're not helping her, we're hindering her. So then we're keeping her small there. So I don't see how we can really vote yes on this when it comes down to what the citizens of Monticello are willing to pay for when all those neighbors start to have to, you know, sue the city and sue Ms. Hagan for property damage, property loss, water issues, and all the things that can come along with that once you start zoning, rezoning areas over conservation, and then everybody down the line does, and you start just creating issues. So more information for city responsibility on this decision needs to be had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for putting the notice out on Facebook to get people here.
Yes, no.
To rally with you, to be against us. We appreciate it, thank you.
I actually put it on Facebook and told people to do this, I said, do it. I didn't tell them how to do it.
Before the agenda was presented here, it was already out, so thanks. Just know social media catches everything.
I'm aware of that.
Behind closed doors or public, so thank you.
I'm aware of that, ma'am.
Are there any other comments?
Jane Gale Boyd, we happen to own two properties that are affected by this. One, we are immediately to the south, it's three-eighty South Jefferson, and the other is eight, six-eighty-five South Waukena, which is on the corner of Anderson and Waukena.
Okay.
First of all, with the comp plan amendment, I want to say it's important, and they made a point in the comp plan to have a well-planned buffer zones. And so that's going to be very important, that that be maintained. The only concern I have is the change from residential identity to commercial. Would it going to affect those buffer zones? I hear there's some consideration about that, so I look forward to hearing more. I just wanted to make sure it doesn't open the door to do away with the buffer zones, because that's very important to the comp plan. I do have a question about the zoning change, R1A to B2. I think many of you knew that I served on the LPA many years ago. It's what got me interested in going and running for state representative, which I served two terms. But one of the things I'm concerned about with that is that when you subject the residential properties that are behind, the ones that are on Waukena Street, you'll have an encroachment by business. I'm very, very pleased and thanks the Haggans for the fact that we're not touching the conservation law. Thank you. But there is some encroachment by business and creates more commercial properties. Could create a precedence for other people to come in and ask for all that to go commercial, which then you're not going to have much of a buffer zone for those residents. And that is a very desirable neighborhood. Can you give me any comfort on that with what this plan will do, what was proposed? Because it could go all the way down to Tri-County. And all those residents there, and like I said, we own the house that could be affected there, six-eighty-five South Waukena. So when you look at all those properties to the south, they, those people now will have precedence to request commercial zone.
Okay, isn't there a, a commercial business, it's a well company or something right there on the corner of Anderson and Jefferson?
That is not in the conservation easement. My property is in the conservation easement. It contains the whole conservation easement down to the, that part of Anderson. So that business on the corner is on Nineteen and is not at all a part of that conservation easement whatsoever.
Okay, and we coming on back to the mill?
Yeah, it goes down all the way to Tri-County.
Right, but the milling company has their property, their business is parceled out from the other piece.
Yeah, so the, the conservation only goes through a tiny bit of where the milling company is located.
Okay.
And other, other things that are within this, I believe, were in existence before the future land use map was adopted in the nineties.
Okay.
But the only thing is, is that you've got a nice residential neighborhood there where people are really proud of their properties and take good care of it. And when you start adding all that commercial in there, and by creating a variance, it just establishes precedence for all that area to become commercial. And that would have an effect on land values and the people that are residential property owners. And I'm just saying, that should be given consideration. The other thing is, is that the parking variance, I know we're not going to discuss that tonight, correct?
The variances are what?
Yes.
Are up for discussion.
The proposed request assumes use of US ninety, US nineteen roadside for parking. And I had passed out previously, the road counts. I did that at a previous meeting back in June, as you can see when I printed it off. Take one and pass it. You can see that stretch there has the highest level of traffic in the whole county except for I-ten, okay? And the point there is, we already narrow, when you go down to, when you look right, it narrows right in front of three-seventy South Jefferson. And that's only a couple of blocks before the courthouse. So you have a diversion there. And that's, that's going to, if you have a lot of traffic, and sometimes when I-ten gets piled up and has an accident, everybody diverts through. The other thing is, is that I can tell you, because they are all braking in front of our office, we're seven-eighty South Jefferson, it gets very loud and very congested. Thankfully, we'll have some law enforcement there to do with traffic, but it's going to create some, some, the other thing with the US nineteen is DOT has the right of way. And parking a lot can change at any time. So even if we're considering using that parking, we have to be aware that could change. So it may not be a permanent answer for that. That's my point. So just be aware of the amount of traffic, the already congestion you have with people slowing down right there in front, because it converges from two lanes to one lane directly in front of three-seventy, because they're braking in front of our office, and that could be a consideration and problem. So I think there's two things that need to be considered for future discussion. Is one, the precedence when you do these variances creates, and the imposition you make to the residential neighborhood.
Okay, I was waiting to see what DOT's answer was going to be about the parking. So since they are, they don't find anything wrong with, I can't argue with that part.
No, I'm just saying that there is, you're asking for a request of variance to what is the current, current city ordinance. And when you consider all that, and you just need to make sure, there's no other place in the city that has that funnel that goes into just one lane, except there. And it is, it's, it's going to create more of a funnel and more of a problem. And you just need to be aware of that and whether that's going to be, like I said, there may not be a lot of funerals. And I'll be quite honest, we're the building right next door. I fully expect people will come in parking our parking lot. It's the way it is. It's, it's okay with us, it's not a problem. But, you know, if we have cars there, we don't want to have to move our cars. But anyway, we're on our own property. But there's two things. One, the changing in the precedent of, of having residential encroachment by business. And then the other thing is, in the future, is that going to be any problem?
Okay, thank you.
But I really do appreciate you all taking care of the conservation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Boyd. Would there be another?
Hey there. My name is Jennifer Lewis. I am renovating the house on three-six-five South Mulberry Street, Monstrosity of the Greek Revival. So I'm new to the city, and I am an entrepreneur, and I don't, I'm not opposed to the entrepreneurial spirit at all. What I am concerned about, and this is, and I split time between here and Atlanta, so I personally am dealing with stormwater issues at my place in Atlanta, and I'm dealing with this in my little town's issue, is that what I've, what I've realized is what may be good for one particular business may highly impact of, it, we, it's, the, the impact is actually, can be unknown. And the changes that were made in my neighborhood was to the benefit of one person, but now my entire street is dealing with stormwater runoff. And it's been going on for years, and I've experienced, been highly impacted with erosion and standing water, and of course mosquitoes and whatnot, and damage to my yard. So that's a huge concern to me, and it sounds to me that we've got some still un, perhaps unanswered questions as to how to properly mitigate that here with this issue. So that's the biggest concern that I have. Now that the conservation easement has come off of the, the table as far as the talking points on that. My other concern too is I do know, again, from a parking standpoint, in the event that there is a need for twenty-five part, you know, parking spaces, what now? What now? Leave it to speculation, maybe they'll park in this one parking lot, maybe they'll park over here. Nonetheless, it offers up potential issues down the road that are, are possibly unforeseen, that again, can impact residents that we don't know how until a later date. So my comment and my, my input is perhaps more research needs to be done on both stormwater and the parking issues, and see if there's a solution, a better solution to address the variance issues or the lack of parking spaces. And really, my passion is, is the stormwater runoff. So that's my two cents, and thank you so much for allowing me the platform.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comments. All right. Okay, all right, so we're going to...
I don't wear the sheet with my name on it.
Well, not the time.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm Heinz, Heinz Boyd. I would, thank you for your comments. She made a key point, and that is, that has to do with the benefit of the land use change and it being mostly for the benefit of one person. And this is, this is part of what I, a, a part of what I want to address. Land use changes are serious business. When I served on the county commission, we rarely did a land use change, and it was a major, major hurdle to get through. And one of the things about a land use change is they should have a substantial public purpose, a substantial public purpose. That's not the case here. You've, you've got a really good use for that land, you've got it zoned bright. There are a lot of people that could use it, a lot of people that would be willing to use it. As a matter of fact, at the last couple of meetings, three, several meetings we've had here with the planning and here, I've heard a couple of people say, I'd be willing to buy that land and discard the price value. It's a valuable piece of property, and it's worth more today than it was when it was purchased several years ago. So there's no reason for anybody to get hurt here by, by denying what is basically a request for a, a personal convenience. There are multiple good uses for that property, but I will say this. That's a very bad precedent for you as a public policymaking body. Because it opens the door, not just for land use changes, but certainly for zoning changes, for other people to come in and say, look, we want the same consideration that you've given here previously. And right now, you've got a good zoning that protects these neighbors that live behind it from commercial development. That's why it was put there, and that was the right reason to put it there. I want to, I want to flip one second, and I, I might want to get the city attorney involved in this. I know that when we were on the county commission, I want to know that we, it won't take, this won't take but a minute. Okay, because I haven't spent talk for three minutes yet, I got it right here, okay? When we were doing land use change, we always, always gave public notice of that ahead of time and, and, and well ahead of time. And, and I see no public notice of, of this particular meeting. Now, you might rationalize and say, well, we did it months ago, but the request has changed?
That's why we're not voting on this.
Pardon?
We're not voting on this tonight, on the land use changes.
You're not, but you're voting, but you are voting on something related to it, all right? You're asking, you're talking about voting on a variance, which I would say is related to it, and while technically it might not violate the law, it certainly violates the spirit of it. What's more, you're working, you're working kind of crippled here tonight. You've got one commissioner, one, one city council member who's recused himself, and another is absent.
I beg your pardon.
So you're not playing with the full day.
I beg your pardon.
What?
I beg your pardon.
What's that?
We are not working crippled.
Pardon?
We are not working crippled. We're doing our duty tonight.
You got, you have, you have, you have three, you have, you have three people. You have three people, and, and this is, this is consideration. This is an issue that are required, that, that should take the, the, the whole body. I, I'm, that's just my comment.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to argue with you. That's, that's an opinion that I think's worth having on the floor. And, okay?
Thank you. If we were not legal tonight?
I would be raising some, making some noise over here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, now, we are ready to go on the requested variance to reduce the required parking spaces. We take that one?
Just to be clear, before we move forward, since we did have one last-minute one, is anyone else, were there any other people who wanted to have a public comment in attendance tonight? I hear nothing.
Okay, all right, let me add right, right here. What we're doing here is what we do fair for everybody. If this had been someone else with the same issue, we would have to go through the same motion. We want to make sure that we do what is right for the city. It may not be your opinion, but it's fair. We got to be fair. So whether you like it or not, we still have to be fair. Any comments, any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, we handed in thirty-five signatures of people that were not happy with the rezoning request. And so you need to be aware, they may not be in this room, but we handed in positions previously.
And so you need to be aware, they may not be in this room, but we handed in positions previously saying they disagreed with it. So I'd like it on the record that there are thirty-five disagreements in addition.
And I'd like to have those addresses clarified to be sure that they are within the bounds of being not fictitious for the area.
They're not fictitious, there are some people that, their residents is not.
I believe that the time for a public comment has ended.
Okay, and be aware that this does not involve, this thirty-five people, but it involves the city. Okay, now we shall move on. Uh are we ready to vote on the variance for the, to reduce the required parking spaces?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I need a motion, okay. Do I have a second?
Mayor.
Yeah.
We have an update on these, and if somebody on the planning agency voted and your ex-official with this changed rubber rule law, and we don't have qualified in our, um charter, then you can vote too.
Yes, yes.
Move a motion on.
Yes, that's right.
So.
That's right, that's right. Okay, all righty, so, uh, there's a second, all right, second, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, okay.
No.
Two to one.
Two to one. Now, now wait a minute, did you vote on this before? Okay. Uh, okay, so there's two to one. All right, now, there is a request for variance to increase the number of spaces that may be surfaces by a stable porous material from twenty percent to ninety-two percent. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move.
Okay, the second is?
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that uh we will accept this, and it will move over to next month. Next on the agenda, six fifty-five and six sixty North Cherry Street, McPherson Construction and Design.
So uh, this one was a variance, what they have done is they have taken uh the advice of the LPA. There is no more variance involved. The LPA recommended that they just uh turn the, I believe you all received the new sheet of it. Um so they recommended that they just move the location of that garage.
Okay.
And um there, there's no problem with the LPA or me, um so this one would be just a simple approval of the site plan as of here.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this site plan?
So.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's been properly moved in second that we accept this site plan. One oh four North Cherry Street.
That item has also been removed since the agenda was created, so he's just not gonna attempt to, to have the ramp.
Okay. North Jefferson Street, just north LLC, uh T-Mobile Wildlife mural.
And that, you just received a new sheet, which is a memo from the county manager.
Yeah.
And so the Okay, the Jefferson County Board of County Commissioners voted on Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five to approve the proposed T-Mobile Wildlife mural in the more neutral tones of, of the, the options that you've been showing on your package. Uh the motion was made by Commissioner Hosford and approved unanimously. The mural will be going on the south side of the building just north where Penny Lane and Point was located. The rendering has it on the north side, so the picture you see isn't showing it properly. That's what we first received, it's shown on the north side on Dogwood, it's actually gonna be on the south side um northwest of the courthouse. So there's those faux windows that are painted on the building, and then to the left you have the art studio and the that's, that wall facing south is where they're talking about having a mural. If you all choose not to approve the proposed mural, mural, we will request an extension from T-Mobile and rebid or scrap the project, depending on what T-Mobile will allow. The LPA was all against the mural as it looks now, um.
They considered the neutral tones, correct?
Yes. Yeah, even with the neutral tones, um, uh they felt it was too south Florida, um not enough like a postcard, which would have been nicer, but they thought it didn't fit. Um Brian, do you have anything to add to that?
The, I mean, the, the real issue, my understanding is T-Mobile will extend, or is offered to extend, um I think. Um so that's a possibility, the, the process for getting submissions um was so compressed, and even at this point, if we were to approve it, the timeline for completion is extremely compressed. I think the calendar has the completion of by December twenty-second, so the artist would have to get in, prep, do all their work by the twenty-second. You know, apart from the fact that the, the design was not uh a, uh, considered a suitable design for the city, so that was some of the discussion.
Was it anything detrimental, or was it just their look? Because this is not something that just, uh, this T-Mobile has been in the works, and it, it's been advertised.
It's a combination that's.
I'm just saying, what, you saying, I'm hearing it has this Miami look, and we at this point, everything in Monticello is always three or four people. I'm gonna dictate what, what is.
Brian, I, I think it was having to do with the positioning of this too, is that correct?
At, at the time, they were thinking it was gonna be on the north side of the building, so you'd be looking at this one while you're looking at that one, they didn't like that. That's not gonna be the.
It was always gonna be two, it was always gonna be two of them.
Right.
So, and that's what I'm saying, is there anything that's detrimental to a health, or is it just because it's, we think it's a Miami vice look?
Aesthetically, they didn't like it.
Aesthetic, okay, okay.
So, but the, but the, we got one submission, because the, the time, by the time the submission, yeah, I mean, posters have been plastered all over town, but, but by the time the formal you know, request for proposals was put out, was a very limited timeframe. So there's been an extended amount of time on the backside of it, but the actual implementation of requesting um, submissions from artists was extremely compressed, and it's compressed our timeline for all of these um, uh approvals and everything as well, so um, you know, the, the real question is, do we just go with this, or do we kick it back and try to get something that we like better? I mean, that's.
Uh, it, it's been some work done, and like I said, this is part of the tourist development council was trying to attract people to the city of Monticello, Jefferson County. And so this is just one thing to catch people coming off of the, um, Florida Georgia Parkway, just like you have the hunting. I mean, yeah, hunting store here with boats and guns and everything, and so you do have a cafe with latte, and and so if you wanna attract everybody, it's, can't just be bland, and what's bland and what, I mean, it's art. So everybody can have a different opinion of what art is.
Sure, absolutely, I mean, I'm just, just relating with the, the LPA, so.
So if you wanna entertain a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve it and move, and accept the T-Mobile grant, and the pitch and move on.
Thank you. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
I wanna be in that longest one too.
Okay, all right, it's been properly moved in second that we will accept this application for a mural to be painted on the south side of the building. Okay, um land and building purchase opportunity, twelve ninety-five Rocky Branch Road, New Kennedy.
Have you seen one oh four North Cherry?
Sir?
Still one oh four North Cherry?
Yeah, that, that one's been removed. The six fifty-five and six seventy, and then one oh four.
The one oh four North Cherry, the one oh one.
That one's also been removed, yeah.
That's been removed.
Yeah.
All right, well, Jack Pitts, Captain of the Mossup Police Department. Uh, y'all sent us over to get further along with the Duke uh building over there off of Rocky Branch. Uh, we started off, they gave us a proposal of five hundred and seventy-five. We um countered, they ended up arguing that two fifty. I believe that's probably a good deal in regards to land property. In order for us to grow as a city, we need to be able to have some buildings and some structure. The police department is looking to expand itself in not only, but training, but in all aspects, as well as being able to have new state-of-the-art equipment. In order to do that, we have to grow a little bit. Our building that we were in since nineteen forty-two has served its purpose. Um like our city, our community is growing, um our police department is growing, so we need to be able to allot for that. By having the bigger building, we'll be able to have a training facility inside under our own roof. We would be able to house, facilitate, and bring other departments in to help us uh provide the citizens of the best uh quality training, uh as well as being able to expand ourselves, having more. We currently don't have enough room to house all of our equipment inside of our bay, so we're gonna have to put it out somewhere. And rather than cluttering up the side of our building, this would provide us with a, a area to do that. Uh I believe it would also provide the city with an opportunity to expand the city hall. They'd be able to push over to the old building that we have, which would be more up to date for what they could use. Uh this old uh building that we utilize for what we're using right now is adequate, but not efficient. So we'd be able to allow us going into the new building, them going into our building, and then they would be right here next to the old building as well.
And we, no, uh, let, hold, hold, hold. You should be moving there, well, that's what I already, but you, you had the city hall, you had the police department, and the fire department in that building. I remember, I remember one bill, three dollars, you go over there and pay the water bill. So, I mean, you can use it, but I ain't got to.
And with the new building, it has a bigger and a larger yard, so we can actually host um events out there for the community. Um to encompass the younger people, older people, um to know what the city is all about. And we can just do events, like, we can't hardly do anything now because of the space now, but over there, we can monitor everything. And yeah, I think it'll be a win-win for everybody. And it's big enough to where if something were to happen, like when we have major storms, we can put in one of those spaces, places where we can sleep and all that, so I mean, it, it, it'll, it'll be a win-win to me uh for the entire city.
One of the things to think about, uh, I believe Kurt, we have approximately a hundred thousand dollars in reserves.
So in the public reserve, we do have that uh in an account, that would be available to go towards this. But um I would say the other, if we went with what they're offering, the other hundred fifty thousand should probably come from a loan.
I would, I would suggest.
Or some other funding opportunity.
And I would suggest to the council to go back, uh you know, they countered at the two fifty, I think we should recounter again. Um I don't.
Two hundred thousand, that's where I stand as a legislator. Remember this water, I'm putting building, but bargain, make them go down, because that's a service to the city. You get money from the city, so why not drop that fifty and give, let it go, two hundred thousand. They make a no money out.
Do any of y'all have any questions for Chief Ry, or the city manager?
Where's the building?
It's, it's the old.
Progress Engle Building.
Oh, yeah.
So can we, can we also, um, I mean, I, I know you gave a vote to justification. Kurt, can you get with the legislative delegation and try to see if we can get also that put in the issue?
I think, I think we're right outside of you talking about for.
When we, we, they had said not for a building, right? They had discussed.
So we've already talked to Allison Tant.
Possibly outbid it.
Um Allison Tant articulated for the, I hope I'm using the right appropriations money. So the appropriations money wants to see a in-kind effort, not necessarily we have to match it, but they wanna see what we're doing. One of the things we would like to try to do is to go after appropriations, once we get the building, to refurbish the building and put into the building. Maybe build a basketball court or something, you know, to be able to house community events as well. Uh there's a lot of things to look at doing with the appropriations money, once we get the building. If we wanna get the appropriations money to get the building, we gonna, we're gonna have to navigate that water in next year. Because we just missed the way to appropriate.
Past, yeah, because we submitted our, and then, um after discussing with Allison Tant, the other representatives, they had said that it wouldn't be our building.
They write those up into the last thing.
But I, I can check, I'll check with her aides to see if I can still submit something.
The other thing is, we have a hundred in reserve, and we're, we're, I keep to go back and look at the, what can we.
And there's more in that reserve, but the police have a hundred of that.
I know, I, I'm not counting that hundred, I'm counting the other hundred, all the whatever from the other side of the house. Can we go back and research our budget of what we have in there? And see if we can trim some of that before we.
Is there any other questions in regards to it?
I would also, you know, I know there's a opportunity to get an inspection done, which I think would be key. And also then some sort of uh estimate for build-out cost, so that we know kinda grave, what we're talking about here to get the doors open for this thing. Um I'm, you know, I wanna be supportive, but I also don't wanna look up in a year and we're three hundred thousand dollars over budget, and we're stuck between, or something like that, so you know, as long as we have um, you know, a path forward with estimates on build-out and, and use and uh where the money, you know, was gonna come from and everything.
The good, the good thing, uh it can be as big or as little as we want it to, depending on what we'd like is main, the main thing would be to have a vestibular area for public and divert where employees can come in. That's probably gonna be our biggest expense to the building, um as well as bringing things into the twenty-first century, having equipment, TVs, monitors, things like that. So those are, those are gonna be the key things that I see that we're gonna have to have, um as far as the building, unless there's a major thing we find in um, in the inspection, uh it's kind of plug and play. But you know, we can, compared to our retro that we already have, we're uh, we're, we're gonna be in a better, a better situation by going into it.
You're gonna mega bytes to gigabytes.
Is there any other questions in regards to that? Anybody from the public have any questions?
Should get that uh studied first, and then you can whittle them down a little bit more, because it'll never be up the code.
So, and so we would, we would, I mean, just, just as going for your house, we would potentially enter into a contract contingent on the inspection and everything that brings up, um and, and any of those details that we wanted to add.
As long as the contingency period was long and deep enough to let the city out if there's, you know, a conflict that comes up, um and I don't know if you've dealt with similar situations, um for what that length of time would need to be.
Given how, I, I, I mean, a lot of it depends on the, the time it'll take to get an inspection done. Normally, that isn't too big of a lift, but what we're also.
We should be able to do that in January, because we have.
What we're also talking about is some further negotiations, and um, I mean, some further negotiations as well as financing options, which um I'm sure we can get that through some contacts with the league, that shouldn't be too terribly difficult. Or at least have them put us in touch with groups that would permit that. I think that at this stage, there's been a proposal for a proposed purchase price of two hundred thousand dollars from one of our councilmen here. And if that were to be the authorized purchase price by the council, then we could potentially say, okay, we're authorized to do that, we're authorized to do financing up to X amount. And enter into a contract contingent on inspection and all of that at this stage. I mean, it's a good bit of contingencies, obviously, and uh I, I don't, I, I won't speculate as to what financing looks like for cities at the present state, it's not something. for cities at their present state, it's not something that comes up terribly often. Uh, so if that's something y'all want to consider, then that's something that we may need to do a little bit more research on.
They got a hundred in reserve.
Yeah.
We put some money for technology, which we haven't even started yet. That's why I'm saying, go back and get the budget, because I thought it was a nice chunk in there that we can start, that we, we shouldn't be talking about going finance a whole lot if what I'm hearing. I mean, just, just with the numbers off the top.
Yeah, we're about to have an update of where we're at, um, for the first quarter of our budget and then I'll be able to look at those and know what we're looking at.
And from the understanding that we've gotten from the representatives, if we do purchase the property, that then when we go to write, um, our arbitration request, or appropriation request, yeah. Get the right.
It can go towards outfitting.
It, we can articulate that we have extended the hand of what we're doing, so that way we don't have to do it again.
Now, are we buying this as-is?
Uh, we'll, we'll end up going through the same processes that you would on any other uh purchase of a property. Uh, we will buy it as-is, the inspection, um, again, we'll go through the same processes of ending ourselves with a timeline and make a decision.
So if the inspection turns up something negative that we would want fixed first, then we can address that because essentially the contract would be null and void if we didn't agree with.
Right, okay. Yep, yep, big consideration for your roof.
So do we need a motion to move forward with, with negotiations?
Yeah, uh.
It sorta depends on what you wanna do here, so if.
They want a contract to have an inspection, so if we're gonna move forward to get an inspection, um, I believe that we should prepare a contract contingent on those items, such as the inspection, such as financing.
Right, right, there you go.
That if, that if the city cannot find.
That's right.
A way to finance it, you know.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
That, that's what I mean, is there's a lot of different parts on this one.
But the contract would, the contract, if we decide that that's what we want, the, the financing, that's on us, I don't have nothing to do with whether we gonna continue with the building, because we know whether we.
Well, there's, there's a few different things, so we're going, there's a hundred thousand in reserve that we know of tonight. That's the amount that I think everyone would be comfortable with saying, okay, let's allocate that towards the purchase of this building. Or at least that's something that we could definitively put a dollar amount to tonight. The remainder amount is either through financing or it's coming out of another pot of money, which would require a separate appropriation or financing from an outside entity. Currently, I don't know if it's one, two, or both.
Right.
Um, because I don't know how much is in that uh technology update budget or, or other pools that we could potentially pool from here. The third thing is obviously if we do get into a contract, it will be contingent upon, um, the, the inspection to our satisfaction or without finding any major problems or however we. That, I need to brush off my real estate purchase hat and get the precise wording of that down. But when it comes to, um, the financing, I, I personally, I don't like buying something without knowing where the money is going to come from. And if, if I'd be cautious about entering into a contract prior to having a pretty firm idea of that financing.
So can I just, from a, a residential real estate, the as-is contracts are written pretty heavily to uh protect the buyer in the situation and the, there are inspection clauses and typically there are financing clauses, and if a buyer can't secure financing to their satisfaction, then they're allowed to terminate the contract without penalty, so, you know, but the, uh, so.
Commercials.
I'm sure it is, but.
It's, commercial can be a lot more, you pay X, I pay, I give you Y.
Yeah.
Um, it can be a lot more direct, um, and that's, I, I need to, uh, our, our firm has someone who specialized in more commercial properties down south that I'd want to talk to before giving a firm. You know, this is what we should do in this one.
Okay, so we're saying that we need to look further into this, is what makes it.
But what is, what is timeline, cuz again, sometimes we.
This has been a pretty, this has been a pretty long timeline already.
So, I mean, so to understand if.
We've already identified with Duke that this is not something that's gonna be quick, they're waiting, they're awaiting y'all. Uh, they know that y'all only meet once a month, so.
I, I, I told him that while I could start conversation from here on out, it's gonna be public hearings with people like that.
They, they wanted to get, they wanted to get a, do we want it or not, so that way they know where they wanna go with us. Um, I know that the, talking to the people we've talked to so far, they want to help the city as well as the police department and providing more for the city and citizens, so they wanna try to work with us.
I personally would like to see at least a framework of a, a contract and possible financing options before we move forward.
So would we be at the point where we need the council to advise us what number they want us to be at to do that?
I think, I think now if we're taking kind of the middle road approach here, what we could do is the council could formally authorize.
Just one minute, Ms. Mrs. Connor. Uh, let me catch it before you go. We want, as, as a council, we want to let you know we offer our deepest sympathy in the loss of your daughter. Yes, you've been a long time berry, I'm, I'm telling you, hang with us. But I want to make sure we acknowledge you before you leave.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, so what we could do at this point is take the middle road approach, which would be to authorize negotiations up to a certain dollar amount through the council, which would set a firm price, but it also doesn't necessarily create a obligation to enter into a contract. That gives us a little bit of space to both find however the rest of the money is coming from and, um, uh, also work on a contract. Um, part of this could also be, uh, viewing contract proposals, so potentially at the next meeting, if we can get them to potentially write us a contract or see what kind of contract they're looking at, we could have something a little firmer in front of the council for the January meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, um, I can look into the budget on our end between now and then, um, so that we know a better idea of what we're working with, um, instead of just the broad strokes, and then at the next meeting, if we go forward with the contract, then we can get the inspection lined up, which should be available in January anyways.
Okay. So if that's the route we wanna go, what I would recommend is entertaining a motion, potentially after some public comment, as to the uh amount that we're willing to negotiate up to in this case. Or what, the amount that you're going to authorize, uh, Kurt, to negotiate up to.
How big is this building? Fifty-eight hundred square feet, I wanna say, plus, plus remind.
It's huge.
It is, from the outside it doesn't look here.
Right, yes, I, yeah.
It's a, it can, it can definitely, it can definitely facilitate our needs, especially in times of emergencies, being able to. We could have enough room to have not just us, but all of our city personnel, that it comes out to help with storm debris cleanup and whatnot.
There is more room for emergency operations.
They would be right next door to where all of the equipment is.
And how big's the parcel, do you know?
Oh, don't do me that way.
Uh.
They did tell us what it was gonna be.
I could look it up if I need to.
Yes.
Well, it's gonna be cut.
Okay.
A little bit.
Okay.
Because currently it's, currently it's the entire, you know.
Yeah, okay, so we, we need a new survey, they need a new parcel, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Right now we're looking at forty-three dollars and ten cents a square foot, that's.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'll buy it if anyone.
I'm not, not sure, not sure we're getting knocked down as much.
Okay. Alrighty.
Alright.
You're completely good?
So we need numbers still, but we need.
Right.
So, do you want a public comment?
Yeah, I, so I was in the service for fourteen years, served alongside security forces in Germany, I'm a comm guy, by the way. Security forces in Germany and Alaska, and I seen, you know, cops are operating out of something the size of a Conex or a Grandios, you know, like they have down in Tallahassee. When the police force increases, um, stress levels increases, if facility is not there, and you'll see that in the form of training. You're gonna pay for training no way or another, you're gonna send them somewhere else, have someone come here, um, for incident response. It's not just the emergencies that are there, but for R and R, for morale type purposes. In between, for us, it would be like, um, parades and community events, um, as well as, you know, the emergency hurricane or something like that that's there. So not investing in a, in a community that's growing and the cop for, not the cop for, security forces, the sheepdogs that are here. Uh, not doing that, you'll see it in other ways and possibly even retention, and I can't say in the service, you're there until you're not. If you've served, you know what that's all about. But those bases that have had adequate training facilities, those guys never wanna leave. And so it's just, uh, it's great for the sheepdogs, it's great for the community, and I just wanna say over here at this little corner, I would support this.
Okay, thank you.
So we, do we wanna see if they, you know, we've had two hundred, we got two fifty, do we wanna?
Whichever way you wanna go.
They're at two fifty.
Yeah, so my first was two hundred.
They came back at two fifty. Do we wanna see if they'll bite at two twenty-five?
Yeah, I think that's on.
I'll make a motion that we, um, authorize verbal negotiations with Duke, um.
A maximum.
Yeah, maximum of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the property at twelve ninety-five Rocky Branch Road.
Second.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, unanimous, alrighty, so it's been properly moved in second to authorize the, uh, ongoing process by the city manager for twelve ninety-five Rocky Branch Road. Okay, requesting to hold utility late payment shut off until December twenty-nine.
Uh, so typically be the twentieth, that's gonna be entering right into the Christmas week, and so we thought to hold it until after Christmas would be, um, nice.
Okay, so move.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Um, and quickly, just because this is related to utilities, um, so in the past and, and the guidance that I've, have learned since being here is that when someone calls after hours to, uh, make a payment and then they want their water turned back on, um, is that we would not dispatch someone to go do that, we would not pay them overtime by dispatching them to do it until they're back at work the next day.
Okay.
Um, now, there's always pushback with anything we do, so that is how I've been doing it, is that we won't pay extra money because someone called after hours. If the council wants us to dispatch no matter what time, uh, whether someone pays during hours or after hours, send someone out to turn on immediately, then that's what we can do. But currently, we, we were not gonna do that.
Can I say something real quick before decisions be on that one? Um, just because someone pays after hours and they tell us that they pay after hours, nobody's in the office to confirm and to pull that payment in, to know that, yes, that is paid and the amount that they were supposed to pay was paid, not just an amount they feel was okay to pay just to, you know, say, you know, oh, I paid, well, that wasn't the full amount that you needed. So, sorry, it's all you did.
Okay, any other comment?
Now, apart, what reference overtime, what is that on call person for? Is it anything go on?
Could we, for, for emergencies, for a, a leak, uh, any, anything that happens, um, but when it's just that somebody paid after five o'clock and want their water turned back on because it was shut off for non-payment, um, we'd be, when we cut, send someone out, they're on time and a half, and so it's just to consider, do we pay time and a half for, uh, something that's done after hours?
After, after business hour, you mean they dropping it in the box?
Uh, like, uh, they'll call, they'll, uh, they could have, or they, they make a payment online after five and then they call the PD, tell them, I paid my bill, here's a receipt from the website, um, can I get my water turned back on, is how it typically happens.
And it's never verified with the utility clerk or that any shut-off list after that. And mind you, everybody has two months to pay, actually more than two months by the time it's around four shut-off. And everybody waits till the last minute majority of the time.
Okay, and correction on the hours, four o'clock closing time, isn't it?
Five, eight to five.
Move back to five, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So we receive a payment up to five.
But isn't it standard that you pay up to five, that you only get credit to the next business day, you know? Why is it?
Because at one point or another, somebody got spoiled and it trickled down to the pipeline of, oh, if I pay after hours and all I gotta do is call them, oh, they'll send somebody out. Well, you help one, you know, you, you give them an inch, they take a mile, well, neighbor tells a neighbor to the neighbor and here we are. Now, we have a big issue to where we're having our guys go out, you know, everywhere because people are not paying their bill when it's supposed to be paid regardless, and it's not an actual emergency. So, that was the thing, and so it's, it's wasting, it essentially kind of using more of cities' dollars to pay these guys to go out for.
It costs one and a half times as much to have someone go out.
So we spend, we spend more because it's late, so this is just a question of, um,
Having back leg.
How do we wanna spend the money?
Okay, so it, our, uh, office hours, eight to five for the, uh, for the, are we open to the public?
Yes.
Nine to five or eight to five?
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
Eight to five for everybody, and that's what, when they call on the phone of how long we'll be here, I said, I'm here till five every day.
Okay, alrighty.
I think if somebody pays after hours, they should not expect service until the next day. And if, that, you know, that.
Next business.
Next business day.
That, that's how we're currently operating.
Okay.
We just wanna get clarification of.
And then make it full, send a memo to all the.
We can, we can add it on the bill.
Yeah, add to the bill, you, you don't, you wait up to five, it's the next day, so they know.
Well, we've already added on the bill that we will no longer be doing courtesy calls due to the fact of our shut-off list has grown tremendously.
The call volume was up so high.
And we still have people, I mean, they ignore it, they, we still have people get mad because we never called him, well, we stopped calling months ago.
Well, it did.
But, but we, we, we can.
Put it down a while, so.
Okay.
So you got some back leg, and that's it. Bring it up to five, look for it the next day.
Okay.
Oh, we can do it how Ms. Jerry used to do it. And once they were shut, Ms. Jerry, once they were shut off, they had to pay their full amount that was passed to you to get turned back on.
Um, so the, uh, the next thing was, um, so Christmas, uh, what we typically get is Christmas Eve and Christmas Day off. Um, Christmas Eve will be on a Wednesday, Christmas Day is Thursday, um, so we are requesting to give the city employees Friday off as well. Um, and so we didn't follow the county and work a half day for the day before Thanksgiving. We went ahead and worked the whole day before, um.
Okay.
In anticipation of asking for the Friday off. So we still have our on-call available.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, reports to council, go ahead.
And one last thing, uh, garbage pickups for the holidays are gonna be the Wednesday before, so for Christmas, it's gonna be, uh, the day before instead of Thursday, and for New Year's Eve, it'll be the Wednesday before as well. Um, and that happened for Thanksgiving, uh, I dropped the ball on that and was not able to get a better notice out, so.
Okay.
Pops did tell me that that would be happening.
Okay, reports to council, Chief Mosley.
Okay, if you look in your packet, uh, I'll find mine first. It should be the, uh. I attached a memo. To it, uh, we got, I wanna surplus some vehicles that we have over there. Uh, I got two vehicles that I want, that I wanna take out of service. Uh, and I'll read this memo as written, I am requesting that the attached page containing two vehicles become surplus. These vehicles have been taken out of service, I am requesting that the vehicle be donated to another agency or be sold at auction at my direction. I am requesting that the money, if they're, if they're, uh, auctioned, then I'm requesting that the money is collected. Be added to the police department's vehicle reserves for future purposes, purchases, uh. And I think that's all I have, if y'all would.
Can we take, can we take the money this year? And put it towards the purchase of the new building?
You did say, you did say vehicle reserve, so.
No, you said purchase of vehicles.
No, 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 I, I meant, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just, I just thought to you, I thought I heard, gotcha.
Well, I could take.
To just put it into your, your police reserve.
Trying to dig that hole.
So the first, the first cut on that entry. The first part is, he's talking about possibly donating, these vehicles are are canine vehicles.
Yes.
There's other agencies that have been helping us, especially with our parades and things like that, and they have been asking chief to. They've been reaching out to chief if there's an opportunity for them to be able to gather some equipment to start some of their own canine, um, so that's possibly what.
Yes.
Okay.
I would move that chief be allowed at his discretion to. To dispose of those two vehicles.
Alright, all in favor?
Uh, thank you so much, and, um, we've also, in my last packet, uh. My guys over there have gotten a grant for traffic. Traffic enforcement, uh, you see the vehicle we have over there, the, uh, uh, big, um, what is it, mail truck?
Brick truck?
Yeah, brick truck. Anyway, uh, we're out here trying to enforce the traffic laws and we're trying to slow people down and cut down on accidents and all, so. I mean, I commend these guys for, uh, getting this grant, and we're trying to serve our citizens with pride. And we want them to be very, very safe, you know, and we're coming up to Christmas, so I'm encouraging everybody to, uh. Be safe, be careful, and with your presents, don't put your boxes on the porch, because then people are know advertising what you have in your house. Uh, and we got this Christmas parade coming up, uh, Saturday, so, you know, be mindful of the traffic, it's gonna be at night, so. Just be mindful, uh, be patient with us, um, planning and execution is gonna be pretty well the whole day. So we just want everybody to just enjoy themselves and, uh, for the new year, uh, just be careful.
And, and his, the parking is gonna be cut off a little bit early on this coming up Saturday. That is solely to ensure the safety of the participants that are gonna be on the sidewalks and in the parade. We're doing the best we can, I know there's gonna be some, some grumbling and upset people about the fact that we're blocking off parking in the downtown area. But to provide the utmost security, chief has decided that that's the best thing that we can do.
I mean, we, this is gonna be another, this is gonna be one of the nighttime parades, so, uh, we just want people to be careful and want them to be very.
I blocked my, my spot off too, so I can have somewhere to, you know.
We will, we will.
For anybody that's grumbling, we're gonna put four or five thousand people downtown in front of their stores, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know.
And as another note, it's in my summary, um, I'm sending officers to, um, another town to help with their parade. On Friday, Friday night, then they coming back and working all day Saturday, so it's gonna be a long weekend for a lot of those MPD guys.
As well as our, uh. You know, we, we wouldn't be able to block off the roads without, uh, his, his people.
Yeah, I told the first, you'll be assisted.
It's gonna be a long weekend.
Okay, thank you, uh, city manager?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, attorney?
Okay, um, couple of things, first off is that the, uh, charter review is moving along and we're looking at having. Some of the first drafts, uh, providing nothing happens to me later this month, in terms of what, uh, that's looking like, um. It's more or less what we expected, we're looking at, uh, the, the comments so far have been largely focused on updating and. Kind of revitalizing that our charter, especially to, uh, clarify a number of items that are pretty darn archaic. In there, um, but, uh, that's all moving forward and hopefully come election time next year, we'll be all ready for that. Uh, second thing is my firm name, um, unfortunately, our firm has grown to a point. Where we have started running into conflicts of interests with our clients between each other, um. To that end, it's unfortunate, but our two named partners will be splitting, it's been pretty amicable so far. Uh, and, um, I've already been told for chief's benefit mostly, that I'm free to call, uh, Michael Spellman. Who will be splitting off into a separate firm and who is highly specialized in law enforcement law, that I can call him with. To pester him with questions if I need to. Um, but to that end, we may have a name change coming up soon, uh, there's a decent chance we're reverting to the old Sniffin Law name, um, after. The founding partner, Robert Sniffin.
Just make sure to get me the change for my side.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, okay, Deputy Millet.
Um, don't have anything at the moment.
Okay, alright, alright, got some on my.
I am tapped out.
Okay, Mayor Cox, I did all that. Councilman Evans?
Uh, I just wanna thank the chief, city manager, and deputy clerk for the second harvest food for our drive, I mean, it was a success. And like I say, it's every other month, and it's duly needed, and the chief and, um. Kids can verify that, it'd be a lot of people and a lot of people in need of food, so I just wanna thank you for the support. I'll let you know in the next.
Okay, Councilman Jones? Go ahead.
Alright, uh, I want to add, uh, the, uh, ad for the city clerk has gone out, resumes are coming in. Um, so far, I've got about a dozen, so, um, I'm starting to go through those, and then I will be getting with you, mayor. Um, so that we can look over those to give a recommendation to the council.
Great, great, wonderful.
Um, and that's gonna be run for a few, at a minimum, I figured let it go at least a month.
Yes.
Bring in our, our crop and go from there.
Alrighty, okay, alright, is that all for the good of order? If it is, so move.